Welcome back. Welcome to the August 12, 2025, Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. City Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Bulo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Spambauer?
Here.
Flom? Absent. Mugawar?
Here.
We have six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Bulo, and he'll also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance as well.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back. We had a little summer break. It's almost like we're all new here in the fall. We had two proclamations, one I'm issuing tonight, and then one that we also issued kind of in advance for National Sea Trax Train Week, which is coming up in the middle part of September. Tonight, though, writing, issuing a proclamation regarding Civility Month here in the city of Oshkosh, and Mr. Alex Hummel from That Project is here to accept as well, and yep, and so is well. So whereas the city of Oshkosh, Wisconsin's event city, is known as a friendly welcoming community, offering an exceptionally strong quality of life that attracts individuals and organizations to live, work, study, and enjoy the beauty of our immediate surroundings. And whereas the Oshkosh Civility Project, founded in 2010, is based upon the work of Dr. PM Forney and his book Choosing Civility. And whereas on June 14, 2011, the Oshkosh Common Council adopted Resolution 11-270, declaring its support for the Oshkosh Civility Project and incorporating its principles into council's operating rules. And whereas the Civility Project has been active and engaged in community, regional, and broader efforts to promote an understanding and awareness of how communication patterns impact others. And whereas the Civility Project is celebrating its 15th anniversary this year. And whereas the Civility Project is supporting an initiative during the month of August 2025 to advance the cause of civility and the shared understanding of the importance of our actions and conduct. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2025 shall be known as Civility Month in the city of Oshkosh, and encourage its residents to reaffirm the principles of the Civility Pledge, which state, "We build a stronger and more diverse community by actively sharing our ideas and opinions with others in thoughtful and considerate ways. By practicing this basic commitment to civility, we learn and grow from one another, even in disagreement." Mr. Hummel, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm joined here too by Sue Ponik, one of our members. So I appreciate you and our core team members for the Oshkosh Civility Project. Thanks so much for honoring us. And thanks to the city council for all those years ago, supporting this initiative. Yes, we're 15 years old, and we're proud of that. And we are approaching this year a little differently with 15 years under our belts now. We're reaching out to the community and asking them to help us find 15 torchbearers, 15 people who really exemplify and embody the values that you see right over there on the wall behind the speaker stand at the, at Oshkosh City Hall. So we're inviting the community to join us and find some nominees. And they can go to our Facebook page, which is facebook.com/oshkoshcivilityproject. And the form is right there. And share with, share with us the people that you think really typify what we're after when we talk about civility.
I just want to say that the core team has been very active, but we couldn't do this without our, one of our founders, who was Walter Scott, who is not able to always join us in our meetings, but is always very supportive of what we do. And we have a very busy sign over there. So I'm just going to quickly say that the nine principles that we have identified that we think we all can live by is to pay attention, to listen, to be inclusive, not to gossip, to show respect, to be agreeable, to apologize sincerely. So it's not just a flat, oh, I'm sorry. Show respect, be agreeable. Oh, I said those two. See, it's busy. I can't, I get lost. Give constructive criticism. I can't even read the next one. It is to take responsibility, and that's the last one, and to speak our piece. So thank you very much. Thank you for always having that behind the speaker.
Thank you guys. Congratulations on 15 years.
All right. We don't have anyone registered for public statements to council. Again, I know we've got a number of audience members here. If anybody wants to speak to us on something not on the agenda, now is your time to step forward. Sounds good. Moving on to consent agenda. I also do not have anyone registered for anything consent related. Counsel, I'll take a motion and a second on consent.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on anything before I pull one? I'm going to pull Resolution 25-417 only due to some conflicting information within the resolution. I think it combined two different actions possibly, and I don't want to be approving the wrong thing or based upon the wrong justification. So we're going to pull that, and then we'll see that the next regularly scheduled council meeting, or if we can get clarification by the end of the night, we can always come back to it as well. If there's no comments on anything else consent related, if you'll take the role on consent minus 25-417.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
New ordinance, we have three of them. No action anticipated this evening. If we have questions, we can ask, but they'll come back at the next regularly scheduled meeting, otherwise for discussion and action. Ordinance 25-428, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on 16th Avenue. Do we need to do something with 25-417 before?
Yeah, it's, it is before you now. It was pulled, now it's before you. And I don't know if you can see Sarah back there, if she has had a chance to figure that out. Otherwise, you, if not, you could lay it over to the next meeting.
Thank you for the catch. Moving too fast.
Yes, there was some language mixed up with the resolution and the memos that came forward. My recommendation would be just to hold it, and we'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay.
I hate to do that to a project, but there's enough language issues within it that I'm not comfortable trying to get something passed tonight. So I apologize.
Sounds good. So in front of us is 25-417. I'll take a motion and a second to lay it over into the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on laying it over? If you'll take the role on laying 417 over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six, to lay over to the next meeting.
Thank you. I'll do ordinance 25-428 one more time, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on 16th Avenue. Ordinance 25-429, amend parking and loading zone regulations on Algoa Boulevard in front of Reed Elementary School. And final new ordinance, 25-430, amend section 2-10B of the city of Oshkosh municipal code pertaining to regular meetings of the Oshkosh Common Council, provide for establishment of an annual schedule of meetings. Again, all three of those will come back at the next meeting for more discussion and subsequent votes. New resolution, Resolution 25-431, approval of cooperative agreement for continuing transportation planning for Oshkosh, Wisconsin metropolitan planning area between the city of Oshkosh and Go Transit, city, state of Wisconsin, Department of Transportation, and East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and the Oshkosh Metropolitan Planning Organization.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? If you'll take the role on 25-431.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Present.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 501, present.
Resolution 25-432, award bid to Elevate 97 for LED electronic message centers for the Parks Department. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson.
Sure, I'm, I'll be a no on this one. I feel a little bad because obviously I was part of approving the CIP in 2025, but I should have noticed then. There was some discussion at the CIP meeting for this year about signs like this. I don't see the value in it. I'm not sure this is money well spent. I knew it was part of the plan, it's been in the plan for a long time. So with respect to corp and with respect to CIP, I know we planned for these things in advance. On this one, I'm just, again, not sure this is the right use of funds for it. And if I'm honest, I'd rather see, and Ray, you can back me up or not on this, but I think there are probably a lot of park signs that need some work somewhere. I would rather see consistent signage throughout the parks. And I'm not sure I see the value of putting messages in those spots. I don't know if they're in keeping with what we're trying to do. I do think there are collaborative funds out there to work on a bigger project than just this one. But this is a big price tag for only three signs when there are a lot of things that are in need in those parks, to be more consistent and to look better than they do now. So I mean, no offense with any of that. I just don't think it's the right product for the right thing. And I, again, if the goal here is marketing, I think we can probably return investment better with those dollars spent on traditional marketing in place of where more people see them, because I'm not sure the message gets out to people as they drive by a sign anymore. That's it.
Yeah, I can just respond because I remembered, obviously, that during the CIP, the discussion on the senior center sign. And I think in our minds, the senior center sign was really meant for senior center programs, less traffic seeing that sign. We do have a lot of traffic, obviously, for Menominee Park, South Park. We get a number of requests from a number of either shelter rentals, community events, to have their events posted on there. So that's one of the reasons why we felt was the high traffic volumes in those areas.
Sure. I get that. For me, I don't see the value in posting those pavilion uses on a sign. I just don't.
Yeah, I guess it's more of the community events that are hosted at those.
It might be because I look at this in terms of traditional marketing, because that's part of what I do for my businesses, and that the cost per click would be a really high dollar amount on $200,000 worth of signage. I just couldn't do it.
Councilmember Bulo?
I'm going to be a yes on this. I do support. I remember the conversation, especially as related to senior center, and I still agree with not doing it there, but doing it especially in Menominee Park on Hazel and South Park, they are high traffic. And I think we will see, I mean, there's signs there now that I look at when I go by them to see what's going to be coming up and different announcements. So I do see the value in this. It is a high price tag, but it's also a good quality product that we're going to be putting up that'll last a long time. So I'll be a yes.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm just curious, and Ray, this might not be a question for you. Has there been any research done, or do we have any research that shows how residents get their information from the city?
I think the, the last corp update, as part of the survey, we may have asked that question. I don't have what those results were.
Do you know if LED signage was one of the options that people were indicating?
I believe marquee signs in the parks were, but I don't recall where it ranked in those.
Okay. I think I agree with Councilmember Larson. This can always come back, but I can think that until we know how people are getting their information, and if this is truly adding the value that we think it is, $120,000, it's a lot of money for three signs that will require maintenance over time. So I'd want to understand if this is truly adding value, or if it's just the next iteration of something that already exists.
Deputy Mayor?
So we went out to bid for this already. We like posted it, and we, we're selecting a vendor right now.
Correct.
And they have been notified that they were like the selected vendor, I assume.
Correct. They, they were aware that it's on the agenda tonight.
Sure. I'll echo a little bit of sentiments from both sides on here. I, I'm not a huge fan of LED signs either, but we did see this. Out of respect for the CIP, out of respect for the vendor and our process, I'll be a yes on this. I do think personally, I don't like the look of electronic messaging centers. I do think there's maybe better use for them, but I, we should have caught that ahead of time, I think, is what I'm kind of saying. We, we ran us through a CIP process. We've gone up to bid. I don't want to pull the rug out from underneath the company at this point. So that's where I kind of sit.
Mr. Spambauer, followed by Mr. Larson.
I also was a bit taken aback by the, the cost here. I, I hear, and I think to some degree, agree with Councilmember Bulo about these being placed in areas that are slightly more higher traffic, have the potential of reaching more people. But I also very much agree with Councilmember Nichols and Larson that I think better understanding the degree to which these signs lead to residents taking action on attending more events or doing other sorts of things, I just think is worth investigating and having some more information on.
Councilmember Larson?
Joe, I was just going to mention that. I hear what you're saying entirely on the CIP and the process. I look at this like there is, there is still recourse here. We can still correct a nearly $200,000 mistake if we think we made a mistake, and this is the time to do that. So to Councilor Nichols' point, I'd rather see this come back with more information, rather than just say, geez, we approved it. I mean, there are things in the corp plan that have been there for 19 years that will be a bad idea 19 years from now. And at some point in time, a different council than us will have to have the ability and the wherewithal to say, we respect that was a good idea 19 years ago, but now it's not. And I know there's only one year, but there's still, there's still recourse here.
Mr. Mark?
City manager, I'm just, did go ahead and find in our corp survey, marquee signs in the parks received. It's about 31% of the respondents said that that's how they get their information about park facilities, programs, and events. Top one being obviously social media, word of mouth. Surprisingly, newspaper was 39%. But marquee signs was about 31%. I'm sorry. Digital newspaper.
Okay. And this is just for the boards themselves. This doesn't even install them.
That's correct.
Idea of, I understand what we budgeted. Sometimes that's close, sometimes it's a little off. Do we have a sense check on installation costs to get these expensive boards installed online and fully operational?
Yep. The one at the Leech will be obviously least expensive because it's mounted right to the, the Leech wall. So that one will be pretty simple. The one at South Park and the one at Menominee Park, we're intending to have some stonework, some pillar stonework. But then there's a concrete base, obviously, that'll need to be installed, foundation, based on what we paid for the one out in front of our new office facility. We're estimating probably about $20,000 to $25,000 for South Park and Menominee.
And these, and I appreciate the memo, are these controlled from a central location? Do I got to go out to, somebody's got to go out to program them within a certain amount of feet?
Nope. These are cloud-based, so we could do it from home.
Okay. Before we call, for our call for the question, Councilmember Nichols and Councilmember Larson, your points are very valid. And the Parks Department, I've said it for seven years, we tend to put a lot of unfunded mandates into our Parks Department. We tell them, go do something, and then we don't always fund it as well as we possibly could at times, to make sure that those things are seen through. So I understand, and I appreciate the comments about a better, better spend even on that, on these dollars. But I also completely get that trying to market, trying to attract, trying to catch people's eye to bring people to some of these functions that we have is, is a thing. It's important, and this is a mechanism to do that. I didn't have a problem with it when we went through the CIP, and I'll support it tonight as well. So with that, if you could take the role on 25-432.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
No.
Larson?
No.
Spambauer?
No.
Mugawar?
Aye.
We have a tie, so that would have lost.
Fail 3-3.
3-3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 25-433, sorry, let me just catch back up here. Approve preliminary plat for the creation of 91, a 91-lot single-family residential subdivision east of Clearville Road, one quarter mile north of West 20th Avenue. This is fifth addition to Casey's Meadow South preliminary plat, and Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on 433? I see none. If you'll take the role on 25-433.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, 25-434, approve preliminary plat for the creation of a 25-lot mixed residential subdivision east of Sherman Road. This is second addition to the Island View Estates preliminary plat. Plan Commission also recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I should have said on the last one, but I'll combine my comments for both 433 and 434. Over the last several years, we've talked a lot about housing, and it is great to see that we are moving forward, or that developers are moving forward with putting lots out there for development and for sale and to build more homes. We need housing at all ends of the spectrum, and as well as not just in one or two specific areas of this community. I'm glad to see some development happening on the far north side, and I look forward to continued development throughout this community. As we talk about this budget, you're going to hear us talk about the term net new construction. And we are limited, we are going to be limited by our growth to the net new construction that occurs. And so every house that goes in the ground, every commercial building that goes up in mixed use will only help us as a community grow. And this is one in a series of things that we need to continue seeing, seeing happen in this community. So I'm excited for not only the last one that we just approved, but this 25 lots on the northeast side as well. Deputy Mayor?
I can cover my, under future agenda items, I can cover my comments.
Okay.
Not specific enough to this one.
Sounds good. If there's nothing else, take the role on 434.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 25-435, approve conditional surrender of Class B beer liquor license and issuance of combination Class B liquor license. This is for the Jockey Club at 24 Grunwald Avenue. Take a motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on 435. I see none. If you'll take the role on 25-435.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
So that wraps up the action items for this evening. I will move on to council discussion, direction to city manager, as well as future agenda items. First up, Councilmember, actually, Deputy Mayor Stevenson, this is discussion direction on industrial district impervious surface policy proposal.
Yeah, so I can, I threw together just a brief memo, but I can give a little bit of background. So I had kind of out in the community, listening to issues and stuff, I heard kind of a talk come up about how our industrial districts don't have all the same impervious surface requirements. Kind of put them out there. We have four industrial districts. Three of them are at 70% impervious, and one is at 80% impervious. My experience throughout the valley is that 80% is pretty consistent with what other communities do. So I'd be proposing that we move all of our industrial districts from the 70% to 80%, and then also allow conditional, condition, an exception, that they can go up to 90% so long as the staff is like signing off on it. One thing I want to kind of reiterate with this is that we're not, not waiving landscaping rules, we're not waiving setbacks, we're not waiving stormwater requirements. This is really just an aesthetic. If a industrial user comes in and wants to have that 80% coverage of their lot, they would still have to manage their stormwater. They'd have to make up for that amount that is now impervious. Again, I, I'm not a huge parking lot or giant buildings fan, but I think in an industrial use, they often need those capacities. They need additional area for just material, for storage of vehicles. It ends up creating this issue where if they can't fit it on their lot, they just go buy another lot to slap a parking lot on. And I would rather have our community be as dense as possible and use the, every bit of land that they can instead of having to kind of sprawl out all over the place. So again, want to reiterate, not trying to change stormwater requirements here, but I am looking to try to change by right impervious surface areas.
Any council member questions for Mr. Stevenson? Yeah, Mr. Larson?
I think easy one. And Joe, thanks for bringing this forward. Do we know it's before my time. Why are some 71 and some 80 now? Do we know? Does anybody know? I guess it's not, not that important, but.
Probably.
Looks like we had a lot of shaking heads.
What would the benefit of having some 10% less than others are?
Yeah.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
In terms of a next step on this one, counsel, if you're okay with city staff advancing this to the rewrite stage, advancing it into city staff's hands, can I get some yeses or no's?
Yes.
Yes. No nodding head down there.
I was waiting for the whistle. Yes.
I'm fine. Sounds good. Directions, I think, is given on this one, if we could see that, that into the future. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for, for working on this. Next up, as I'm, there we go, reloading. Direction to staff regarding municipal code, chapter 14. This is post-construction stormwater management ordinance updates. This is a layover from our last meeting about a month ago. Appreciate Mr. Robbie coming up to help us through this one. This is a follow-up from a workshop staff presented regarding potential updates to some of our requirements. They laid out some scenarios for us to maybe choose from and get us to have some discussion on. And then last meeting, we decided we, we laid this one over for a further discussion. Have I given enough of a brief background? Do you want to, you want to share on this one a little bit?
Yeah, I think, you know, going back a little bit, as, as council may recall, there were some different recommendations coming from your advisory boards. Sustainability Advisory Board had a recommendation. Plan Commission had a different recommendation. Plan Commission's recommendation was alternative or scenario five, but with an increase in some of the phosphorus reductions. I believe Sustainability Advisory Board was alternative two, if I am remembering correctly, which was.
Scenario one.
Scenario one. Thank you. I couldn't remember it off the top of my head, and I wasn't finding it real quickly. So thank you. Which is, you know, a little bit more stringent than the other scenarios. You know, so I think before, as we talked about, before we started doing a lot of rewriting in code, because it does take a lot of time and effort, we just wanted to get some final direction from, from the council on where we had some of the, the key points, some of the additional materials that were asked about during the workshop and that have been provided. Especially, you know, we've talked a lot about new development and some of the other impending changes in the code pertaining to new development. One thing to be, I want to be very clear about is the stormwater practices that are required to comply with the current state law as it relates to total suspended solids will result in a higher phosphorus reduction than what we're proposing in this code. So this code update does not have an impact on the cost of those developments, because what the state requires for TSS already exceeds what we're suggesting here for the total phosphorus. That is why we chose the levels that we chose for the total phosphorus, because it was very much in line with what those practices that are already being used to comply with state law would achieve. We didn't want to shoot too high and require everything to go through a bit of a, an extra review and a variance type of a process. We wanted to set the level at a level that's achievable with practices that are already in place, while still advancing on the TMDL implementation plan, which is required by the DNR and has been a part of some of the plans that have been approved and submitted to the DNR.
And just to be clear, the scenario five is what you're saying?
Yes, that, that is what we are recommending, which is, you know, as I said, Plan Commission went with scenario five, but an increase on the phosphorus. We didn't, you know, while we appreciate that from an environmental standpoint, we didn't necessarily think it was. was necessary to do that step.
Okay. So as, so the recommendation still from staff is five as written?
Correct.
Okay. Council, any questions? Mr. Larson, go right ahead.
James, I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, the council info link here is sort of new information that shows the MS4 permit as it stands. Was that, I don't, I don't recall seeing that before and I'm sorry if I missed it, but I think some of my concerns are still with that part of this process. Cause it, in the workshop, it was really vague and I know that we don't know what's going to happen next. This seems to still indicate that we don't know what the next one, the next requirements will be explicitly, right? Or when they'll be?
We, we don't know what the next permit is going to hold. We just know what the DNR has done in previous permits, which has been, they certainly have not gone backwards on any of the requirements as, as they've issued new permits. This permit has been expired for over a year and a half, so it's, it is overdue. But at the same time, there's an expectation from the department based on the plans that we have approved and submitted to them, that we are doing these types of things. And if we don't, we do run the risk of the DNR stepping in and telling us what to do. And I don't think that's a situation that we would like to be in.
I get that. And there's, and I'm not trying to be a sickler on it, but in, I understand there's, there's no way to know what that is and there's no way to know what the next requirements will be. I'm glad that we're doing a good job and I'm glad we're considering what might happen. But I, I struggle with that as a concept because that's not really, it's just not very clear for us, right? So I have a hard time making decisions that will cost developers money based on something that we don't know what it will be until it happens. Know what I mean? And that might just be me. So it's fine. You don't have to answer it. The rest of that question is there's a project grant that's tied to this. Do we have to do anything to have that grant come our way?
We've got to follow through on the project and complete it.
But what does that mean?
The, the submittal for the grant was to evaluate and update our ordinance. So I think if we don't follow through, we would not be receiving those grant reimbursements.
So if we, if we do the study, which we did, and we learn about it, which we did, and we decide that we want to keep everything the same as it is, have we met the requirements of the grant or not? That's a hard question. I don't mean to ask it that way because it sounds snotty, but you get what I'm getting at.
I do get where you're getting at. And with 100% certainty, I can't say, but my, my suspicion would be, no, we haven't fully met it.
Sure. And I think I'm the outlier up here, so I'll just, I'll, I'll sort of show my hand as it is. I understand all of it. I understand the importance of all of it. I want clean water as much as everybody else in the world. I have a really hard time with how vague this whole thing has been. And as, as I've said every time this has come up, I struggle with the fact that we have the highest stormwater runoff rates in the state of Wisconsin. And I would love to be addressing that part of this equation with this, and I'm not sure this does it. So for me, the only thing that makes sense as a recommendation is to keep things the way they are. And I understand there's recourse is there and I might be the only one who feels that way, but that's just kind of where I'm at.
Councilor Bealop, filed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So thinking back to Plan Commission, we selected scenario five that was modified for the total phosphorus reduction for redevelopment only. That was the only change from that. Looking at our page 19 and our handouts that we have that have the surrounding communities, what they have for the total phosphorus for redevelopment. At 30, we're the lowest of anybody on that chart by almost 10 points. And I think that's why at, at Plan Commission, we wanted to make that a little bit more, I don't want to say, you know, aspirational, but you know, a little bit more aggressive. Can you walk me through what would, what do you see being the real world impacts of having that be at the 34.5 or 35% or whatever versus leaving it at 30? Like, how much is that really going to affect?
It will, it will require some consideration as far as what, what practices are available. I think some of the, some of the things that we are working on from the staff level is we are trying to educate the design engineers and then we'll be working to try to educate developers as well. Because there are a lot of things that they can do to meet these without costing anymore. And in fact, in some cases, costing a lot less. You could go through and do some simple infiltration testing and infiltration counts 100%. Whatever water infiltrates is 100% removal for phosphorus and TSS. Even though, you know, we are in some very tight clay soils, water still infiltrates through that. A little bit of work up front can reduce the construction costs tremendously and significantly reduce the size of those practices. And honestly, it's, it's a step that's just not even being taken because there are too many, I would say in the design community that look at and say, well, you know, you're in clay soils, DNR says we don't have to do it, so we're not going to do it. You know, so, so that's some of the things. It's just careful consideration of the practices. But you know, at the end of the day, I, I still firmly believe what we're asking for here is not going to cost anything more on the development side. And if they follow through with some very simple preliminary steps, it can cost a lot less.
Deputy Mayor.
If we did move forward with this, I would strongly recommend that we do scenario three. At Plan Commission, I believe you guys kind of paid deference to the Sustainability Board. And that's why you guys decided to do kind of the second least intrusive one with some kind of added caveats on top of it. When we look at the TSS reduction, again, we looked at those watersheds. The watershed that was doing poorly, that was not improving, was the Sawyer Creek watershed, right? So that's why, when I look at the TSS reduction, we don't need to increase the new development side or the redevelopment side and the other areas, but we do need to help that Sawyer Creek area. That is the area that is doing poorly. So that's why I would say in that scenario, I like that it's broken out in both of those regards. The TP reduction, we don't do right now. I guess from, James, from your perspect, I mean, if we did just, so in these scenarios, in the 54% for new development and 30% for redevelopment, it sounded like most, most businesses met that already. Correct me if I'm wrong, or were close?
Yes. In the analysis that we looked at for some selected development sites, they were all either already meeting that or could have met if maybe a different practice would have been selected. In some cases, our estimates were, you know, some sites maybe would have cost a little bit more. Some sites would have actually cost less if they'd have gone with different practices. And again, like I said, infiltration testing can really reduce the cost a lot.
Okay. And yeah, so I, I mean, trying to do some of that stuff for cost mitigation, I think will go a long way. I'm going to give maybe just kind of a long spiel on like, in practice, how this works. I know that the Sustainability Board wanted to have kind of the most stringent requirements because they wanted to have quality water and good clean air and things. And I think we're all on board for things like that. But in practice, when we try to increase the size of stormwater ponds, try to put on more requirements for stormwater and water management on our, particularly, I'm going to talk about like redevelopments. New developments may be a different, but if you go with a redevelopment, sometimes you'll have to knock that building over and out where you could have kept it under old circumstances and not had to build a brand new building. Or maybe now you have to have two sites that accommodate the same amount of housing, the same amount of office spaces. I always kind of preach that density is the gold standard of sustainability. Building up and being able to do those things is going to help us in the long term. And again, maybe I'm getting on a little bit of a tangent here, but I think scenario three works here. I think a lot of our businesses can meet the TP reduction to begin with. And then we kind of highlight the watershed that was doing poorly. That's the one we're going to target instead of putting new requirements elsewhere. So again, I, I want to walk the line between making sure that our development community can build densely, can continue to, to develop in our areas, but also to ensure that we're meeting the DNR's requirements. And that really is kind of the, the driving force behind this right now, right? I mean, we, we have to show improvement from the DNR's perspective in some way. And I understand that from your perspective, James. I mean, it's hard to go back to the DNR and say, my council doesn't want to show improvement. So I, I know that eventually the DNR will come knocking and if we have some stuff in place at this time, I think that could help.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question on, on that, Mr. Robbie. So the difference between scenario three and scenario five, as Deputy Mayor pointed out, it's really just under the redevelopment area or the redevelopment part of this. And it's, all other areas would be only a 40% reduction. Just that one watershed would be within the higher. So staff suggestion was number five. Why not number three? Maybe from your perspective?
From our, from our perspective, it was a simplification for staff and the developers not having to figure out where am I and what is my requirement. That being said, it's, it doesn't take long to figure that out either. And a few phone calls can, can get that sorted out. But that was why we were looking at five versus three. It's just trying to be more across, everything's the same. We don't have to figure out one special area. Everything is the same. And it's the same for all the developers everywhere and the same as we're reviewing it. That was, the primary reason was consistency.
I appreciate Councilmember Larson sticking to his guns on this one and why he's there. I don't disagree. It's, in this particular case, and this is, I shared this with Mr. Robbie, this is all a bit scientificy, right? And unless you're in it, you don't necessarily understand all the implications of it. And it would be really nice if somebody from a certain agency or just said, this is the requirement. And then we would choose to meet that or not, I suppose. Or we could go beyond that, but at least they would be setting the line in terms of here's the minimum expectation. And so I understand where you're coming from in terms of setting a bar higher than we need to. I do take comfort in the fact that no matter what adjustment we make, I have full, full faith and confidence in Mr. Robbie and his staff in terms of the, the feedback he's giving us that the, this recommendation won't drive the costs of those projects up based upon just this solely. Other things are already doing that or have done that. That us updating our codes to matter, to be at this level, isn't the driving force for any cost increases that a developer or redeveloper would, would potentially incur. Am I saying that pretty accurately?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where I'm at on that one. I was fully prepared to go with number five. I don't, I can agree with the Deputy Mayor that calling out that one specific watershed and letting else, others have a lower threshold is appropriate. And I'd be fine with that recommendation. Mr. Spanbauer, you want to go? You don't even have to push it. Floor is yours if you want.
So I just wanted to comment, you know, I think the Sustainability Advisory Board, I don't know that anyone wants to be stringent, but you know, trying to be exemplary or just thinking about our, our water quality, right, which is a very precious resource. We are Oshkosh on the water. You know, I think looking at scenario five, which is not actually that different from scenario one, TSS in new development is slightly lower, TP is in new development is slightly lower. Interestingly, also, when, when compared with some sites that had already been developed, looking at, kind of mapping those against all of the scenarios, they would all meet the requirements in scenario five. So I think that that's an important, you know, already developed sites, given with what they had, right, would, would meet the scenario five requirement. To some degree, I don't disagree of kind of just separating out the, the other areas from the Sawyer Creek watershed. I think there is also an argument to be made for just keeping things sort of uniform and expecting a little bit more TSS reduction. Or I mean, it, you know, it's, I don't know that it's that much higher for, for redevelopment in the areas outside of the Sawyer Creek watershed. So I would, I would encourage us to still go with scenario five. That was staff's recommendation.
Right ahead.
Director Robbie and Councilman Spanbauer touched on this, but my only objection to scenario three is that we are consistently trying to simplify our codes so that we can communicate better and have more uniformity. That I would still prefer to see scenario five and just have it at the higher requirement for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add something as well.
Absolutely, of course.
You know, one thing that I, I don't think we called out very clearly as well is, you know, there is administrative flexibility already built into our code with the, the clause maximum extent practicable. You know, so we already have some administrative flexibility built into the code and that is maintained through this update is, you know, because there are sites that just, no matter what you may want to try to do, you just can't get there. And that administrative flexibility is built into the code. It doesn't have to come before you or any of the boards. We have that administratively. If somebody thinks we're maybe not being as flexible enough with it, there's the appeals process that, you know, ultimately it could come to you if, you know, if there's a disagreement over it. But we do have that administrative flexibility to work with them and set some site-specific standards that may be a little less.
Deputy Mayor.
I know I'm arguing over 18% here, but it just, it doesn't make any sense to me if our other watersheds are improving and the one not improving is the Sawyer Creek watershed, why we wouldn't just call that one out in scenario three. But I guess, I digress. We, we have like a zoning map, right? Zones, we, we treat all properties different. Treat one-third of our city different is not that odd and not that complicated. And again, that's the watershed that's doing poorly. If, if we want to, maybe we should just up all the watersheds by 18%, just, just to make them all cleaner then. I don't know. I, I'll, I'll stop talking.
I apologize. I missed Councilmember Spanbauer's button pressed before. You go right ahead.
It's so rare that I do it, so here we are, we're back.
I know.
You know, I guess I just also wanted to mention, heading back to kind of the, the comment about site development, already meeting the scenario five requirements, that also I know, James, one thing we had talked about, I think you just said it earlier, TSS removal is going to lead to TP removal. Is that, that true? So the, the higher TSS is also going to help them on the phosphorus side. So I think that's worth noting. Also, development in any of these areas is a snowflake, right? Every individual site is going to be different and the stormwater management practices that they employ are going to have to be very site-specific just based on the, the, the location and the geometry of the space. Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
So, you know, I think there are some of these practices that are going to even probably get them above and beyond, right? What is perhaps laid out in scenario five, it might, it might push them well into 60%, depending on the kinds of practice that they employ. So I think the, the point you made about just, you know, some, some of that extent, the.
Maximum extent.
Maximum extent practicable, yes. Right? I mean, I think there's, I think there's just enough wiggle room there that I'm, I'm still comfortable with just moving forward with scenario five.
Okay. Why don't I do this? Why don't I ask you which scenario you want and we go forward from there? Cause if I just put one on the floor, we may not get four. So, Mr. Spanbauer, are you going to stay with number fives as you just?
Five.
Mr. Bealop says five.
I'm not going to pick any of them.
Mr. Nicholson?
Three.
Five.
And Mr. Larson?
Current code, so no number.
Five is just fine.
Okay.
I have consensus at five. If we could see that at a subsequent.
We, it will certainly not be the next one or two meetings. We've got some time. We've got to start working on this rewrite, but we will get started on it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give me one moment. Sorry for the awkward pause. Next, direction to city staff regarding potential ATV, UTV ordinance. I don't have who, who originally requested this, but why do I think that Councilmember Larson had something to do with this one?
Yeah, I can start. I think everybody's heard me say quite a bit about this, both here and in transportation. I'll keep it really short because you've all heard part of my speech before. I know Dave is here. I know you registered to speak, but Dave, who was part of getting this passed at the county level is here. I think if we have questions, you would be able to answer them as well, right? So for me, this is a tourism discussion. It got on my radar, working with the CVB because we were working with the group to do this. We have an expo here. And I've traveled the state with the Restaurant Association and have seen how well this works in places that do allow it. So it's a, a big dollar as far as tourism and attracting people goes. The county, I think everybody knows and I just mentioned it, county voted about, um, two months ago?
Two months ago.
To open up all roads in the county. So it's coming our direction no matter what. Lots of the state already does this. I think Dave told us when he was here in July that this is a $5 billion economic impact in the state of Wisconsin. And my sort of catchy thing I keep saying is I, I'm tired of watching these dollars literally drive around us because currently they drive around us and they don't come here. I'd also selfishly like to see Oshkosh sort of lead on this. In Winnebago County, we're already seeing other townships and cities adopt this to allow UTVs and ATVs to be operated within them. I think it would be a really great notion if Oshkosh could be at the beginning of that rather than at the end of it because we'd help other people get it done. And that's just more dollars coming our way. So it's tourism to me. It's a positive thing to me. It's something I've seen work all over the state of Wisconsin and I think it's great. So I'm glad it's on the agenda. Thank you for adding it. Thank you for adding it.
Any other council members? Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, I was also part of a, we had a pre-meeting, I think in July, about this issue, and Dave came and spoke, and this isn't a world that I'm in, ATVs and UTVs, I think they're cool, after talking to the group, but I'm not in this world. I tried to liken it to something similar, because that's typically what I try to do, and this is similar to motorcycles for me, where it's a recreational activity, it's not necessarily incredibly practical, but it is maybe tourism. I focus more on the recreation side of it, where people in Oshkosh could drive these things and get to the county roads, where they're more likely to drive them, they could also come back, they could stop at bars and restaurants in Oshkosh and help our local businesses. But I don't see a reason why they're banned, other than people decided they should be banned. And so, I'm supportive of getting rid of our ban on these, on city streets, and allowing them on city roads, from a recreational aspect, from a tourism aspect, and from the fact that I don't see how this is any different than a motorcycle, which of course are allowed on our roads.
Mr. Beal?
So it sounded apples to apples, but one of my earlier careers was at a neighborhood electric vehicle, 25 mile an hour golf cart, street legal company, and because of that, I had a golf cart that I got to drive all over, and our village allowed it. I took my daughter to preschool in it, I, you know, used it all over, went through McDonald's, and it worked just fine. Like, it's kind of more the UTV than the ATV in this scenario, but everybody got used to driving next to them and having them on the road. It created no barriers, or, you know, I'd say, Councilmember Spanbar and I were talking that the electric bicycles might be more of a problem than these would even be, because obviously these are going to be able to move with traffic and be able to follow the road rules, so I have no problem with this whatsoever.
Well, I'll be the W downer. Somebody's got to be, right? I don't, I need somebody, and I don't expect it tonight, I don't even want it tonight, because we're not giving formal action, but I question the tourism side here and right now, and I know that's shortsighted. I understand the attraction up north, right? If you're going Mutton, or you're going on the trail system, that infrastructure is there, and it's accessible, and that's, it's purposeful in terms of where people are going and what they're doing. We don't have that infrastructure, so we want to put them on city paved roads. And UTVs and ATVs were not built or designed for paved roads. There's a reason that there is a huge increase in crashes when it comes to off-road vehicles that get put onto roadways, because they have higher centers of gravity and other design features that just weren't, they weren't built for concrete and asphalt. So, emergency services, the accident side of this, the safety side of this is what's really concerning me about putting these on city roads. And I just don't think that the tourism side of this is a thing for us, we don't have, there's no draw for people to use these in this space. I could be wrong, and that's fine, but that's where I'm at on this one so far. Yeah. Don't know, don't have to respond, can respond, but just throwing it out there. Mr. Larson, go right ahead.
I won't add much, just because I've gotten in this role a little bit, and motorcycles is part of what I do, and that's part of where it is, an appeal to me, that's how I met these folks in the first place. But in a lot of instances, and Mr. Mayor, they're good points, in a lot of instances, folks are putting road tires on these and not using off-road tires anymore, because it's safer, because it's a lot less expensive. And again, it's, it's not selfishly my world, but this is the world I'm in, where I do see folks using these in a recreational manner to go to dinner and to go on a tour. Same way, to Councilor Nichols' point, motorcyclists do this all the time. So, whether it is a draw for pure tourism or not, you can debate how you'd like to, but, I mean, we have motorcycle groups show up at our restaurant on a weekly basis, for sure. I'm sure there would be UTV and ATV groups that did the same, and even if they're just passing through to get from here to Kettle Marine, which is where I would be going if I had one of these, because it'd be great, there's still a benefit to us for it. To Councilor Nichols' other point, and I mentioned to Chief Smith about it earlier this week, and to Carl's point about electric bikes, I was driving down the road and was next to a gentleman on an electric scooter that was going 40 miles per hour, I said, that's far less safe than this, because these have doors and indicators and headlights and all those kinds of things that go with them. So, I get the points, and I'm not trying to be counterpointy, but part of it is just where I come from, because I, it is the motorcycle thing and the tourism and the restaurant thing, and people do that kind of stuff on these.
And I could, in terms of putting these things on a road, UTVs have more abilities in terms of safety features and, let's just be, you know, blinkers and indicating and roll bars or roll cages than ATVs. So that's just, there's some nuances to this that, they're concerning to me. And it's, it's not, debate's not needed, it's not, but that's just where I'm at on it. Deputy Mayor Stevenson?
I guess if we're just kind of getting, I'm okay moving forward with ordinance, I don't really care what people drive, as long as it's on the road, so.
Mr. Beal?
I think the other real advantage of this, and I'm not an ice fisher person, but being able to drive it to the gas station filled up with gas and go out onto the lake, if that's what you wanted to do. I know, like I said, back in my previous career, I used to use an electric vehicle with a snowplow on it, and I had to drive it from the factory to my home, climb on driveway, drive it back. If I had to like trailer it for that, it would have been very inconvenient. So I think there are some uses, even if it, I, I'm a little skeptical of the tourism. I know at EAA a long time ago, they had a UTV/ATV show, they had a motocross show, they've done some things like that, and maybe that brings some people to the area. But I'll just say that I think, I think it makes more sense to allow it than to not. I do understand your safety concerns, I don't share them as strongly as you do.
Mr. Spanbar?
I'm supportive of this. I hear the arguments for tourism and that sort of thing, I think just to the degree that they're held, just like any, you know, to the same standards as any other vehicle on the road, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't even think I need to poll the council, there's been enough stated support for it, so. Mr. Preska, you have a question?
City Attorney Laurinson wrote a memo, and just, I only ask this so we're clear on when you start nodding heads or what you plan on doing, but she had a list of other considerations.
Yep.
So, if you could specify blanket everywhere, all the time, or, I don't know if you wanted to refer this somewhere to go over those things, I'm not saying you should, but we're just looking for a little guidance as to specifically what you would like.
Would, how about Mr. Nichols' first, and then I'll ask a question?
Well, I was going to suggest, and what we had talked about in the pre-meeting, was sending this to the Transportation Committee first, to have that conversation and to work out those details, and then we come to council with that recommendation.
Sounds like an excellent idea. Allows for extra public participation as well. Mr. Larson?
I'm fine with that. I was going to suggest, if we need an answer, we can mirror what Winnebago County did, because there's precedent there, we're in Winnebago County, and that makes it pretty simple.
In terms of a starting point for Transportation Committee, Mr. Larson's suggestion of using the Winnebago County as a starting point, at least it gives direction on where to start, and Transportation Committee can have that discussion and make a recommendation to us in short order. Okay?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Sounds good.
Are we doing it? We just did. Okay.
There was enough body language acceptance on that one, and verbal prior to that, that the writing was on the wall for me, so, all good. And this is how it's supposed to work. It's okay to dissent, and it's okay to disagree, and we move on. So, I'll be interested to hear, to see it, and I want success of anything we do, so, the interest to see what Transportation Committee is able to put together for us. Any other future agenda items, meeting, excuse me, actually, any other discussion or direction to city manager on this stuff?
I have a discussion or a future agenda item.
Well, why don't we go into a future agenda, and we can, let me announce these two, and then I will call for future agenda items, how about that? Workshop, August the 26th, 5:00 PM, this is Matrix Development Process and Code Analysis Review. So that is the next council meeting. And the subsequent one after that, Tuesday, September the 9th, at 5:00 PM, will be a League of Wisconsin Municipalities Municipal Insurance Workshop. For those interested in insurance, it's going to be riveting. Mr. Spanbar, or Deputy Mayor Spanbar Stevenson, you had a future agenda item.
In this, maybe this will be a little bit covered under Matrix, but I did talk with Manager Grill and Sarah a little bit about our plating process, and also in the vein of certified survey maps, CSMs. So we do require preliminary plaits and final plaits and certified survey maps, all run through our Plan Commission, then also to come to this body. That's not normal. I mean, it's pretty 50/50 throughout the state, but I know Appleton, the community that we're always comparing ourselves to, allows both of those things to be approved administratively. The idea behind, I guess what I would be looking for, is to have staff be able to approve plaits and CSMs administratively, so long as neither of those are asking for, like, an exception to our code. A plat and a CSM are pretty cut and dry ordinances. Either your lot makes the width and the length, or it doesn't, either your road is, meets our conditions, or it doesn't. I think it's just a process that we can, we can remove. You would still have your things like site plans and other things like that come to this board, really those CSMs and plaits are just like land divisions. So I...
Would you mind coming up? Welcome. Is that something that would be appropriate to roll into the Matrix discussion, the redevelopment or the process discussion?
Absolutely. I think it's an important thing to definitely consider anyways, when we're looking at our processes, is what can we do to make it a little more streamlined? We know the conversation has always been, we want to make things a little bit easier here in Oshkosh, while still following rules as appropriate. The only slight caveat I would put in there is, I would definitely want to check with legal, because I know that there's a specific Plan Commission state statute that we want to make sure that we're still abiding by, in terms of whatever guidance they give, in terms of what our Plan Commission has to review. And, while I have the floor, I would also throw out there that any sort of design standard variances that potentially come through Plan Commission could potentially be administratively reviewed, so they wouldn't have to go through PC, potentially council as well, and then if there is any appeals, we would have it then go through PC and council.
And we know that anytime something's got to come to us, it's a potential delay, in terms of the development process. It's a week, it's a two weeks, it could have been a month, because we took a meeting off.
And I really think the purpose of our Plan Commission in general is to make more subjective decisions. It's, I think a lot of times these come to them, I mean, it meets code, here it is, there's not a whole lot you can do with that. Plan Commission doesn't really, in all honesty, have too much of a decision. So those types of things I would like to start removing from our just kind of bureaucracy, I guess is what I call it.
That was my only question, is that the intention would still be, all these stuffs still go through Plan Commission, or they are just handled?
And I guess, I would prefer they don't, if they don't need to, but if Plan Commission feels like they need to put it on a consent agenda or something like that, I guess that's fine. But my preference would be that if it's a very cut and dry code, it is or it isn't, it doesn't need to go to Plan Commission or the council.
I'm going to pause one second, just as a reminder, while the Matrix Development Process Code Analysis Review was on the agenda tonight, the specific thing wasn't on the agenda to discuss tonight. So, it would be appropriate to discuss it during our workshop on Tuesday, August the 26th at 5:00 PM, and subsequent meetings possibly. Mr. Larson?
I was only going to say, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So, I'll be interested, we'll be interested to see and talk about other great ideas during that process.
My expectation for the Matrix presentation next council meeting is going to be a potentially 15 to 20 minute presentation from our Matrix consultants, as they review the multi-page draft that you guys are going to receive shortly, and then provide some time for discussion concerning which ones you may want to have staff, city manager, et cetera, implement moving forward, because there's multiple recommendations across there. We could prioritize, we can handle that last little bit, how you see fit, but I don't know how in-depth we're going to be able to get, besides a generalized, can we take some items off of PC and council and adjust it that way? Next item, sort of thing, so, just wanted to add that little context.
I appreciate you being diligent on carving out time for discussion.
Absolutely.
As part of the workshop. Thank you.
That is my intention. We'll see how it goes.
Thank you, sounds good.
Okay.
If there's no other future gen items to discuss, council member announcements and statements, any? I see none. City Manager, the rest is yours. Oh, you don't need to press. It's live.
Thanks. For item 54, the, just reporting a professional service agreement with McMahon for the Joint Fire Department study with the Town of Algoma. They'll be considering this, I believe, in the next week or so. We're looking at having them study the feasibility of us joining with the town. There's certain benefits to that synergies, and they'll be doing the study and telling us exactly what those are and how we would be doing it in a successful manner. This is the first, the first step. The second item is PSA for expert witness services. This has been a lawsuit that's been going on since 2019.
Issue's been going on since 2019.
I don't know how deep you want us to get into it, you can contact one of us if you would like to talk more about that. The next item, just wanted to start highlighting our recognition award program. We do have, that for the city, we have the STAR Award, which is a staff appreciation and recognition award. This award is for recognizing employees for their day-to-day efforts and accomplishments toward achieving organizational or department goals, and then we have outstanding service awards. This recognizes employees for the work that supports the mission, vision, values, and strategic goals of the city. So for the first quarter, we had four, or three awards, we had Mike Burnt from Community Development Inspections, a STAR Award, Katrina Mullson from Planning Services received the STAR Award, and Emma Jeng, I can't pronounce her name. Maybe Sarah can help me with that, but from Planning Services, she received the Outstanding Service Award and Employee of the Quarter. So, Community Development received all of the awards for the first quarter, and we appreciate all of their dedication. Thanks.
Jingleski, I believe. She gave me permission to say it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very, very proud of my staff.
Good job, Sarah.
They work very hard.
Good job to your staff and the award winners for this quarter, and I'm glad to see you putting these on the agenda for us to acknowledge publicly as well. That's awesome. I know we do it, I think I've seen in the past some social media stuff, but it's just another medium to use to share out the excellent work by staff, day in and day out.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing is the current initiatives that we're working on. I don't know if there's any questions on any of them. We had the sanitary district negotiations, undergrounding utilities, special assessment, deferral policy, and fair housing ordinance.
I don't see any. If there's nothing else, with that, we take motion to adjourn.
So moved to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.